I'd like to call this meeting to order, and I would welcome those in attendance. Thank you for coming. At this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner McIntyre to lead us in invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner?
Hello, Mr. President. Dear Father, we thank you so much for the beautiful weather, and we thank you for the many blessings you've bestowed upon us. Dear Father, our hearts just go out to those folks in Texas with the church shooting. Please be with them, let them know that you're there with them, lead God and direct them in their everyday lives. Your humble Father, we also ask that you be with our military, our police, our emergency services folks that take care of us every day. And bless this meeting, that we might make those decisions that would be pleasing to you, in the best interest of the citizens of Stanley County. These things we ask in Christ's name. Amen. Please join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
I believe everybody's had time to review the agenda. I'd entertain a motion for approval or adjustments.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda as presented, sir.
Aye.
Do we have a first and a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, 7-0. Item number one is Ridgecrest Volunteer Fire Department Tax Exempt Finance and Public Hearing. Our presenter is Andy Lucas, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This evening, we have a tax exempt financing, which by IRS codes requires the public hearing, and then the subsequent approval by the board. The Ridgecrest, and I believe Commissioner Swain may be able to answer any questions. I think Ridgecrest contacted him this evening, and as fire commissioner, he had a conversation with them. And they had something come up this evening and weren't able to be here. So if there's our questions, I believe Commissioner Swain is prepared to answer those. But they're going to, in my understanding of this, is this may be some interim financing while they're waiting on a USDA loan from Uare Bank for an amount up not to exceed $265,000. I think the actual amount was less than that, 261, I believe, yeah, 261. And so they're replacing a 1990 Simon duplex tanker with a new tanker. This will enhance their ability to provide water on scene. And so the action this evening is to hold a public hearing, and then review and approve the tax exempt financing that they're seeking through Uare Bank. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of County Manager Lucas? Hearing none, I declare a public hearing open for this tax exempt financing package. Is there anyone here to speak for the Volunteer Fire Department Tax Exempt Finance Package? Seeing no one, is there anyone here to speak against it? Seeing no one, what would the board like to do?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the tax exempt financing not to exceed $265,000 from Uare Bank for Ridgecrest Volunteer Fire Department.
Do we have a first by Commissioner Swain, and a second by Commissioner Lauder? Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the tax exempt financing package, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Planning and zoning, presenter, there's, I think, three different requests. We have with us Bob Remsberg. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We have before us three different cases tonight. Mr. Sandy regretfully, well, maybe not regretfully, but he's on vacation, so he's enjoying a well-deserved week off, so more power to him. I think it's great that he's doing it. We do have three cases before us. The first is ZA 1706, rezoning request for Rodney Keck. So you want me to proceed, Mr. Chairman? Okay. Two down. Mr. Keck has requested to rezone three lots. They're containing 4.26 acres and located at 36802 Auto Drive, or at least that's the address on one of those lots, New London, although it's right on the edge of, between New London and Albemarle, from general business and a little section of R20 to M2, which is the heavy industrial zoning. As you can see, the Stanley County Planning Board reviewed this request at its meeting on October 9th, and voted unanimously to recommend approval. I know each of you have seen the memorandum that's been presented to you. The property currently houses H&amp;K Auto Repair Shop, which specializes in auto body repair. It's located way back on the property, as you can see, well, on this slide. The business is back pretty far, over 500 feet from US 52. It's run, of course, by Mr. Keck. He usually stores its vehicles, or most of the vehicles that he's repairing, inside the shop, which meets the current requirements for what his zoning is, which is general business. However, he plans to sell the front portion of this property to the East Albemarle Towing Company to locate their storage yard for purposes there. And under our zoning ordinance, really the only place you can have a significant amount of open storage, more than five vehicles that are damaged or non-operable, is in the M2 zoning district. So that was our recommendation, and again, the Planning Board has reviewed that and recommends it. He would, as they construct this, have to secure or screen the area using a buffer as required by our ordinance around the area where they'd have the impound yard and that sort of thing. So I guess I'll say, are there any questions about the memorandum? Is there anything needed?
Any questions? I believe so, Bob. Thank you. We do need to hold a public hearing, so I declare a public hearing open for the zoning of the property owned by Rod Keck. It's 4.26 acres. I think it's been described what's going to take place. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf or for the zoning request?
I can speak, but he summarized it perfectly, so.
Thank you, Rod. If you want to speak, come up.
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Thank you for being here. Anyone here to speak against the zoning request? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. What would the board like to do?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve the rezoning as requested. It is in a growth area for the 2010 Stanley County Land Use Plan.
Do we have a second to the motion? Commissioner Morgan? Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number two, Bob.
Number two. Yeah, we got three tonight. This is case ZA 1707, a solar electric power generating system proposed by ESA Albemarle NCLLC. They request to add an overlay zoning district, the SEPGS district, to 18.75 acres of a lot that is owned currently by Charles H. Sandifer, LER, at the end of Broadway Road in Albemarle. And that was also reviewed by the Stanley County Planning Board. It's meeting on October 9th, and voted unanimously to recommend approval. This is actually more Baden than it is Albemarle. It has an Albemarle mailing address in that section, all the way up to the town limits of Baden, as you can see. Baden off to the right, or to the east on this slide. Property in question is in the blue outline, and you can see Broadway Road there extending. You have several bits of general business and highway business on Highway 740 as you were coming into Baden on both the left and the right. The GB that's on the right side of 740, east side, as you're heading into town, that's Morris, or Marson, Morris or Marson, Morris Grading Company.
Moore.
Moore, I'm sorry. Grading Company. So as reported in the memorandum, it's mostly open, cut periodically for hay. I know there's been some cows on the property. The east side has a wooded creek area. You can see that on this slide, and you can see where it's been mowed for hay for part of it. The far side from Broadway is, across the creek, is actually part of the Baden Inn Golf Course. The business on, I said, houses more grading company. Other adjacent properties are mostly farmland and residential, several houses along Broadway. Again, what they're planning to do, and this slide may be not quite as clear as I go to it, but you've got this in your packet as well. The dotted line, if you follow the purple kind of line down the right side, that's the creek. The dotted line is the property line. So as you can tell, there's a portion here that's not being part of the overlay district. Again, it's 18.75 acres of the, what was it, 20, no, 32-acre tract. So part of this, it's hard to see at the top of this map, but you see a little road coming in. That's Broadway, coming into the property. So we're not putting the overlay district on the entire 32 acres, just 18.75 acres of this property. It also fits into a growth area with the land use plan, and you can see the traffic count on 740 is 4,300 vehicles a day. I don't think this is going to add too much traffic to that, not in the long run, just while it's under construction.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one. Mr. Remsberg, see in the purple area along the creek?
Right.
I'm assuming by looking at one of the aerial maps, it looks like there's already natural screening in place. What we're looking at around the property on the other, I'm going to call three sides, is there's sufficient amount of screening?
That's right. We've talked to them, they may need to, and they may have updated since this slide was taken, but that southern corner, the very bottom of the map, the screening looks like it ends. It can't. It needs to continue on around and cover that area. But you're right, toward the creek, the purple area there, the screening should be sufficient to cover that. You may be interested, the purple and kind of light blue and yellows area, that's flood zone. So obviously, they're going to stay out of the flood zone as they do this. And you can see there's a kind of a low spot, creeks, two of them, or running through the property, and they're obviously avoiding those areas with the construction of the solar panels. They've, you know, obviously, this is not binding, but they've indicated that, you know, probably about construction starting within about a year of this project.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. Am I reading the map correctly, the one that's on the screen now? Is that a, is it only a 10-foot buffer between them and the other property line?
Right. The zoning ordinance requires a 10-foot vegetative buffer, and I could dig that out, but it, but yes, so, you know, it has to be of significant size to actually, you know, block that view. But yes, 10 feet's all that is required in our ordinance.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll declare a public hearing open. Anyone here to speak for this zoning issue? Yes, sir. Come forward and state your name, and...
Good evening. My name is Justin Vandenbroek with ESA Renewables. I'll be pretty short. I just wanted to, first off, let you all know, I'm here if you have any questions that you'd like me to address, or curiosity, I'd be pleased to answer it, anything, feel free to. Our firm, ESA Renewables, develop roughly 25 projects here in North Carolina. We have another 20, 25 projects that are under development throughout the state, anywhere from Lennar County, Cherokee, you know, just south of Raleigh, north of Fayetteville, lots of projects in the area. As you know, it's a rapidly growing industry, creating a lot of jobs, especially in the construction side of building out the infrastructure. You know, we're following all the setback requirements, 618 code requirements for the overlay district. We sat down and had a community meeting about a month and a half ago with folks, just to address any questions people have. Feel free to get input from folks, and pretty good meeting. We're able to take into consideration people's concerns, or questions, or just general curiosity about how these projects work, you know, how does it impact air quality, runoff? There's no major impacts. It's a very light development, as you may know. So again, I don't want to take up too much time, and you have probably an evening ahead of you, but if you have any questions, feel free to let me know.
I do have one question. Do you all have other solar farms in Stanley County now?
Not at the present moment, no.
Okay, so the ones that are here are not your company?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'll just make a comment. Since there, I didn't realize it was only a 10-foot buffer, but maybe take into consideration, if you are approved tonight, if necessary, if it's not covering good in certain areas, you know, take into consideration, trying to be a good neighbor to folks.
Yes, sir.
Add some additional vegetative cover there.
Absolutely. I mean, it's in our best interest with the projects that we have in the pipeline as well. You don't want folks saying, "Hey, I'm Stanley, y'all did this wrong," coming over to Lennar. There's some good barbecue out there, someone might take the trip.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have one question for the gentleman. What happens when these solar panels go beyond their useful life? What happens with the cleanup and all of that?
Yeah, great question. So the way these developments work, it's fairly simple. It starts off with driving piles into the ground, steel piles, that have a scrap value at the end of the life of the project, that typically outseeds the, outpaces the cost to remove them. So you start with the piles, and then you lead into steel struts that go across those piles. The panels have a recycling process, where the aluminum frames are actually removed from the panel, and then through a heating process, they can actually remove the glass that is encapsulating the solar cells that create the solar generation. So between the recycling, the scraps that come from it, and the value of the metals, it gets recycled, and the site is removed to its original condition. So there's no major, you know, no serious grading, serious, you know, paving. The majority of the site is completely permeable, as it once was. It's one of the nice things about these developments. Yes, sir.
Brings one more question.
Sure.
What kind of life expectancy do the solar panels have?
Sure. So the panels are warranted at an industry level at 25 years. They guarantee 80% of the output in year one, in year 25. So that's the industry standard, that's the warranty, but there are folks who've had panels from back in the 70s that are still in operation. We still have satellites in outer space that are using solar, that are still, been out there for quite some time. So typically, we can see these plants go beyond 25 years into 30 years, but, you know, 25, I think, is a good rule of thumb when you think about the industry at large.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Sure thing.
Anyone else here to speak for this zoning change? Yes, sir, Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman and board members, I speak briefly on behalf of the owners of the property. The applicant, ESA Albemarle, is a limited liability company. It has a lease arrangement with the owners of the property. One is identified as Charles Sandifer. Charles Sandifer has a lifetime interest in part of the property. The fee's simple, owner, and Ms. Furwood understands that very well, of course, is Maire Elaine Moore. You all know her, is Elaine Moore, cattle ranching, farming, and she's here to affirm the presentation that has just been made to you, as well as a recommendation from Mr. Remsberg. Certainly Elaine Moore would be happy to answer any questions. I'd do too, if you have anything.
Any questions of Mr. Brown or Ms. Moore?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak for this rezoning? Seeing no one, is there anyone here to speak against the rezoning of this property? Seeing no one, what would the board like to do?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the overlay district as presented.
Second. Do we have a first and a second to approve the overlay district as presented? Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Remsberg?
All right. That brings us to our third case, which may look a little familiar to you, because we dealt with Mr. Ammons just a couple of meetings ago, with a section of property adjacent to this one. So this is case ZA 1708, and this is a one-acre lot, which is currently owned by Lori Mills Green, southeast of the corner of Webb Road and NC 200 South. Again, the Planning Board reviewed this at its meeting on October 9th, and unanimously recommended approval. As you can look at the current GIS map of the area, you can see a section that is zoned M1 right at the corner of Webb Road and Highway 200. That is the action that this board took, again, I think it was two months ago, and approved rezoning that. Mr. Ammons has requested this. He's, again, he's gotten an option to purchase this additional property, and he's proposing to use this lot, along with the other one, to operate his vehicle repair shop, plans to construct a building for that purpose. Again, it's zoned RA, so the point is to rezone it to M1, which will allow up to five vehicles stored outside, and of course, gives him a little more flexibility, a little more space to do what he was planning to do already on the smaller, the adjacent triangular-shaped lot, but this gives him a little more space to work on. I can go over more information, but I think you probably have read that. It is actually in a growth area for the Stanley County Land Use Plan. I guess, Mr. Chairman?
Any questions of Mr. Remsberg?
And you can see, it's currently a open field.
See anyone wanting to ask you any questions?
I'm not upset.
I'll declare a public hearing open. Is there anyone that would like to speak for this rezoning request? Yes, sir. Please step forward.
I'm Casey. If y'all have any questions, I'll come up there. If not...
Any questions of Mr. Ammons? Don't think so. Thank you for being here. Anyone here to speak against this rezoning request? Seeing no one coming forward, I declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve the rezoning request as presented.
A first, Vice Chairman Furleson, and a second, Commissioner Lauder. Any other discussion? All in favor of this zoning request change, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We, next on, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a resolution to proceed with a rate reduction modification pertaining to one of our school construction loans, and the presenter is Mr. Toby Henson, our finance director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Before you is a, excuse me, a resolution to approve a rate modification agreement with BB&amp;T. This is on two loans for school construction. This would be reducing the rate from 3.67% to 2.69%. I guess just a kind of a brief background, in 2008, the county financed a loan with BB&amp;T for $13 million for the renovation of two elementary schools, and the rate at that time was 4.48%. And in 2011, the county did a rate modification to reduce the loan from 4.48% down to 3.67%, which from then through the term through 2028, produced a savings of around $750,000. And the reason there are two loans now is, when we did this rate modification, we had a little over, I think, $11.3 million left on the balance. So to stay within a, being compliant with the $10 million tax exempt limit for a calendar year, they had to divide it into two. So we did a one agreement in December of 2011, and another agreement in January 2012. So that's kind of a background with that, and now we got a chance to reduce the rate down to 2.69%, which again, would produce a savings of around $381,000, or if you factor in the cost of doing this, would be a net savings of around $367,000, keeping the term of the loan the same, which would end or mature in 2028. We did pursue or explore other options. We contacted some local banks just to see what kind of deal we could get, and we did get a pretty good rate, but with BB&amp;T, by leaving it there, they, they're waiving the prepayment penalty, which is a 1% prepayment penalty, which on a balance, combined balance of 7.5 million, would be about $75,000. So when you look at that, plus when you, if we went with another bank, we would have all-out refinancing, which would, we'd be dealing with LGC application and approval process, which would be more of a complex thing we would have to do. So that would increase bond council calls, financial advisor calls. So probably the total cost of doing that would be probably around $100,000 if you factor in the prepayment penalty. So we would have to get an extremely low rate from another bank to overcome that cost. So that's just kind of a explanation with where we're at with these loans. And if we do go with the rate modification, they, being that we're below the $10 million limit for this year, they will combine it back into one loan. So I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions of Mr. Henson?
Mr. Henson, who was first try on advisors?
They're a group out of Charlotte that, when you go into financing, especially when you're into, you know, what I call more major financing, finances, you'd normally get a financial advisor to kind of help make sure everything's going good, run your analysis. They help, you know, keep our i's dotted and the t's crossed. We've used them before in the past, and they normally provide, in the past, they provided a real good service to the county. I normally meet with them about once a year. I normally meet with them about once a year. Normally, at times, maybe less than that. We always meet and discuss, you know, what loans we may have that may be right for financings. And so they're a group that, that provided a big help for the county.
Any other questions?
I'd like probably a little more information on that. I'm, I mean, I understand that this is, you're using large numbers, but I mean, closing documents and stuff like that on a loan. I mean, we've got a county attorney on staff. I'm concerned about why we're using a financial advisor and paying them $5,000 just to do a rate modification.
I'll just step in. Typically, a county of this size is going to have consultants that help with those types of arrangements, just because they are more specific. They do require bond counsel, and that's why our own attorney, Jenny can look it over, but Jenny's, that, the, BBNT required actual bond, a bond counsel to do that. And so that's why we're required to use a bond counsel. The consultants really just help with running the analysis. It's more complex analysis. We just, a lot of times, don't have that kind of technical expertise on staff. And that's just, you know, it's just the nature of being in a rural county, a small county, with, you know, limited staff and limited ability to run that type of analysis and make sure that you're getting the cost savings, running the numbers, and going to the banks and asking the questions and making sure that we're getting a good deal. So they're, you're really hiring them to provide a level of consultation that we don't have internally. And, you know, that's the reason a lot of folks hire consultants, is to provide that level of expertise that you may not have in-house. And so that, we've been, we've used these folks in the past for a couple different loan types of transactions, and they've always been helpful. And fairly reasonable in terms of the cost per what other consultants are in the market.
Yeah, they, they kind of helped form, in this particular case, he helped form the threshold of, well, do we, to the point, you know, where's the rate should be from, out from another bank versus, you know, do we, where should we be at to consider another bank? Say, in this case, it was like about 2.3% to 2.35% as far as the threshold to pursue having it with another bank versus keeping it with BBNT. Just stuff, situations like that is what they're really good for. And in this case, we did have to have, per request of BBNT, we did have to, they did require us to have a bond counsel just to review this modification agreement, even though, I don't know why, for something like this, we would have to have them. But that's what BBNT basically requested that we needed to do.
So BBNT requested that we use First Tryon Advisors?
They didn't request that. They requested we use an outside bond counsel.
Just bond counsel in general?
Yeah, yeah.
First Tryon's basically providing a service, I mean, like a lot of different consultants do, to basically help fill the gap between our ability with our limited staff and not, not, you know, our folks are very good at what they do, accounts payable, payroll. But when it gets into the in-depth, complex financial analysis, we just don't have those types of folks with that level of experience and that kind of knowledge and that kind of training and background and education, educational background, to be able to provide that. And so they're constantly monitoring, like Toby said, they're constantly monitoring our loans and coming to us and being able to say, hey, we think you can do X, Y, and Z. This may be a good time. And so that, he's meeting with them at least annually, sometimes more than annually. And they're bringing forward that analysis to help him. If we move forward with them, then we get, you know, they, we engage in that conversation. If, you know, we don't feel like it makes sense for us at the time, then we would just tell them, you know, we'll see them in a few more months, so.
Yeah, larger counties and municipalities, a lot of them have staff on hand that, I mean, they go through, ones that go through financings quite often, they have staff on hand that specialize in this. You know, we're, the size we are, we just don't have that staff. And again, I normally meet with them either in person or over the phone, at least annually, if not more frequently. And, and, you know, they've always provided a good service to us. And I just feel better with them making sure everything's, you know, works out to a T.
Any other questions?
So this, so this $5,000 fee for them, that's just for advising us on this one particular-
Yes.
Loan modification request?
Now, when we, yes. Now, when we meet with, when I meet with them, just, you know, in general, of course, there's no charge to them running analysis for us on an annual basis. The only time they ever charge for their services is if we actually do a deal.
Well, I guess I'd just say, it seems, it's tough for me to kind of understand that we're getting a rate reduction from 3.67% to 2.69%, and we're having to hire someone and pay them $5,000 to tell us that that is a good decision to make. I mean, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to beat anyone up. Don't get me wrong on that at all. I'm not trying to beat anyone up on this. It's just a concern. I've never ran across that before.
I guess, if you, a larger county is going to have somebody on staff that's paying specific attention to all their bonds, all their loans. That's their job. When I was in Mecklenburg County, when I was in Mecklenburg County, we had a staff member that, that's all they did, is handled our loans. And we're, they were in constant conversations with the different financial institutions about how they could, and running that type of analysis. We just don't have an individual on staff that has that kind of capability to be able to engage in the banks, be able to have those conversations, run the analysis, make sure that we're getting, getting them to say, hey, we're wanting to do this loan modification. And having that relationship with those banks, they just don't, they just don't, they don't do that. When they're processing accounts payable and doing payroll, they're just, they're not in the, they're just don't have that expertise to, and that's why we pay someone to be able to, be able to bridge that gap for us. You know, this is a service we, I didn't use First Tryon, but we used a service similar to this in Anson County. Because I didn't have the capable, the staff on hand there either to be able to do this more sophisticated kind of financial analysis that it takes to, to run the numbers, make sure you're, you know, obviously, I understand what you're saying, that if the bank agrees to a loan reduction, you don't need them to do it. But there was more to it than that, in terms of them running the analysis to start with, and them going and having that conversation with the bank, and getting the bank to agree to do the loan modification, and having that back and forth in that negotiation. That was time that we didn't have to spend. And we could spend on the other things that, you know, that we're having to do on a daily basis. And so if this falls back on us, it's not going to hap, probably happen as quickly or as readily as it does when we can just have somebody that has that expertise, has relationships, and can run that analysis all the time. So, you know, and again, you know, we're saving 381. Yes, there's some cost to that, but you're still got a net savings of $367,000. So still substantial savings as part of this refinancing or loan modification.
And Union County hired someone from First Tryon Advisors full-time, I guess it was a couple years ago, that has actually helped us out in the past. But they ended up hiring someone from this firm, got them to come to Union County to work full-time to do stuff like this.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. In your opinion, maybe you have some experience with this, is $5,000 an astronomical fee? Is it in line? Is it competitive with other firms that provide this service?
Yeah, from what I've seen in the past, it's pretty much in line. Comparing what we're doing here versus what we've done in the past, when we went through that geo-bond refunding back in 2010, I think they, they charged about $20,000 or more, somewhere around $20,000 to do that deal, which it was a lot more to that. But comparing that and what they've done before, it's pretty much in line with that, because this wouldn't have cost, I mean, they wouldn't have done as much with this as in the past, past deals. But considering what they cost us versus this, it's pretty much in line.
So you're very comfortable with this firm?
Oh, sure.
And confident in it?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to approve the resolution to proceed with the rate modification.
We have a first and we have a second. Commissioner Lauter and Commissioner McIntyre, second. Any other discussion before we vote?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'll just say that I'm sure it is a reasonable fee. I wasn't getting at that, but when we're about to give our blessing and vote on something where we're spending $5,000 of our citizens' money, I want to make sure I know where it's going and that it is, is something that we need to do. And I had never seen that before, so that's the reason I had a question.
Sure.
I will make a comment because I'm familiar with the prepayment penalties. BBNT's willing to waive their 1%, which if we were to go to a local bank, we're talking about $75,000-plus dollars that we'd have to pay BBNT just to get out of this deal. So in the long run, we're going to save a considerable amount of money.
Right. And one other thing that First Tryon did, BBNT originally offered, even if we kept it with them, we would have to pay .5. Instead of 1%, they were saying .5. But then First Tryon stepped in and said, they need to waive the whole thing. You're keeping it with them. They need to waive the whole thing, so.
They earned their $5,000.
So that's what First, that's the major thing that First Tryon did.
Instead of $35,000, we're having to pay the company in Charlotte $5,000.
Right.
They earned that fee. Any other questions or comments? Okay, let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henson. Okay, next on the agenda, we have board appointments. The first is Board of Equalization and Review appointments. And the presenter is our Tax Administrator, Mr. Clinton Swearingen. Welcome, Clinton.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Glad to be with you this evening. I'm here just as a reminder, basically. The Board of Equalization Review consists of five members in our county. They hear appeals for real and personal property when there are disagreements between the taxpayer and the Tax Administration Office dealing with value or timeliness of listing, or a whole range of issues they deal with. We currently have four members on our Board of Equalization and Review. Sammy Estrich Jr., which is our current chairman, and Richard Cosgrove Jr. They both have terms that expire December of this year. So come December, we'll only be left with two members on our board, which is Mr. Jerry Burlison and Ms. Vicky Long. Their terms expire December 31st of 19. We had our fifth member, Mr. Jerry Allman. And Mr. Allman had resigned, and unfortunately also passed away. And this board decided on, at their April 3 meeting, to continue with four members instead of appointing a fifth, since we were in the middle of a revaluation that year. So I'm here tonight to just remind the board that we're going to need three new members for our Board of Equalization and Review, if not by December 31st, shortly thereafter, because I can't have a meeting with just two people. Our board members always meet in April or May to handle real property appeals. But we, they also meet whenever they need to to handle personal property appeals or motor vehicle appeals, which can be monthly. So until we get those new members appointed, I won't be able to have meetings starting in January. One other thing, I just want to recommend, General Statute 105, 322A states that the county commissioners appoint the chairman of the Board of Equalization Review. They don't elect that amongst themselves. It's your guys' job to appoint that chairman. And I would recommend Jerry Burlison to be the chairman of the new Board of ENR. So obviously, you're free to do what you choose. But when you do appoint the three new members, I would also like for you to appoint a chairman at that time. And Mr. Burlison's been on the board now for two years. He's gone through this revaluation. He's very familiar with what's going on, what's expected of the board. One other thing I'd like to tell you, you may not know, but when we have new members appointed to the Board of ENR, the North Carolina Department of Revenue usually sends a representative down on that first meeting, or even prior to that first meeting, to kind of go over what their duties are on that board and what they can and can't do statutorily. So it's really good that Department of Revenue does that. They started doing that probably 10 years ago. I think it's because they had a lot of new members and people were making decisions that were not informed. So they would be coming, I'd say probably sometime early in the year to go over that with these new members. The board, the members can be whoever you choose. We've had real estate agents, we've had farmers, we've had CPAs, we've had bankers, we've had schoolteachers, mechanics. So we've had a wide array of people on the board before. So I'm just here as a reminder for y'all to pick. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One question from Mr. Swearingen. Can the, can the current members be reappointed? It seemed like you were talking they couldn't.
Yeah, they, these two cannot.
Okay.
Law says when they've served two consecutive four-year terms, they have to take a break. Mr. Estrich and Mr. Cosgrove have both served eight consecutive years on our Board of ENR. So they are not eligible for reappointment. That's like, at least a two-year break. And I know, I think Tyler put in your packet a volunteer board application that was from July of last year. Mr. Starnes, I think he's already been appointed to the Board of Adjustment. I'm not sure, I'd refer to counsel, if he could serve on both boards. He can serve on two? Okay, so Mr. Starnes would be available to be appointed if you so chose to do that. But he's the only one that filled out a volunteer application, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can we, could we do that tonight, or?
You can do it anytime you-
Just, well, just for now.
It'd be effective, I guess, January 1, since the other ones expire on the 31st.
Well, I was thinking we got an application there tonight. Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Mr. Jim Starnes to the Board of Equalization and Review.
I have a first and a second, that we appoint Mr. Starnes to the Board of Equalization Review effective January 1, 2018. Any other discussion? All in favor of Mr. Starnes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've got you a new board member.
Thank you. Got two more.
Okay, and Clinton mentioned that we need to appoint a chairman of this committee. And I'd say tonight would be a good night to do that. Does anybody have a motion to make?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Lauter?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask to be recused from this vote.
You got it. All in favor of recusing Joe, Vice Chairman Joe Burlison, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, you're recused. All right. Commissioner Lauter?
Yes, I recommend Mr. Jerry Burlison to serve as the chair of the Equalization Review and Reevaluation Advisory Board.
A second, Commissioner Swain. All in favor of Jerry Burlison being the chairperson, please say aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Stanley County Library Board, presenter is Melanie Hollis. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. We have another open seat on the library board. The board has reviewed all of the applications, and I do think Tyler put them all in your packets. And the board does recommend Glenda Gibson to be appointed to fill the empty term that will be expiring on June 30th, 2019.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Ms. Glenda Gibson to the Library Board of Trustees.
Second.
And we have a motion to put Glenda Gibson as the library board member, second by Commissioner Louder. Any other discussion? All in favor of Glenda Gibson, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Town of Norwood ABC Board Appointment, presenter is Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This really is just to keep this in front of you. We, this item was on the board's agenda last month or last time, and we just wanted to make sure you were aware that you still have the vacancy for the Norwood ABC Board. So as you have conversations with constituents and folks in the Norwood area, just keep this one in mind. We'll put it back on unless you've got somebody in mind this evening you want to take action on. We'll put it back in front of you at the 2nd November meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just so the board will know, I've got a name of an individual, but someone needed to talk to them to make sure they were willing, but hopefully I'll have something unless someone else already has a name.
Any one else want to make any statements about this? Moving on. Stanley County Utilities, presenter is, have I missed something? Oh, yeah, Consolidated. Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Moving right through here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Your initial appointments to the board, Consolidated Human Services Board, which the board took action on back in September. The existing members of the Board of Health and the Board of Social Services developed a list of nominations for the initial consolidated board. Some of the supplementary information we put in front of you at the dais this evening had essentially that, the list of the current members of the Board of Health and DSS, and then to the right of that were all of the nominations that were made by the Social Services Board and the Board of Health. There are some vacant positions, physician, engineer, psychologist, and psychiatrist that can just be filled at some point in the future. And we'll obviously make a good faith effort to fill those, but there's also several other positions, consumers as well as mandated positions such as veterinarian and pharmacist that do have nominations, as well as general public and others. So you've got that per 153A-77, you can make your initial appointments for less than the four-year term in order to have a uniform staggered terms. And I would highly recommend that the board consider doing that. And the board may appoint a member to concurrently fill more than one category of membership if an individual has those qualifications. So if you had a, for instance, if you had a commissioner that was also a veterinarian, they could fill both of those slots. Or if you had a veterinarian that was also a consumer or an advocate or a parent of someone with, that accessed those services, they could concurrently fill those spots. So it's conceivable that, you know, you could have an individual that's filling different spots of the membership along that board. The, the minimum required would be, is, if you just look at numbers, 15, but technically, if someone's filling concurrent spots, you could have less than 15 members on the board. The max is 25 that you can have. And so you have that this evening. The other thing that I would like to mention, and I would look the board to take action on, would be to approve the stipend. The current Board of Health gets a stipend of $20 a meeting. Most Board of Health members don't take the stipend. They just, for whatever reason, don't, don't, don't take that. The Social Services Board, I believe, is $30. I would recommend that we just create uniformity and make the stipend $30 and, per meeting, and that your stipend for the chairman would be $40 per meeting. So I'd like you to take action on that this evening as well. So you have a $30 per meeting stipend for the board members and a $40 per meeting for the chair, once that chair is obviously selected. The other thing I want to mention is they, I've, I've scheduled the first meeting for this board to be mon, or, excuse me, Thursday, November 16. And it'll actually be in this room because the rooms that the current DSS board and the current health board meeting are not big enough for a larger number of folks. So we'll actually begin to meet in this room in, in the future. And that has access externally, which is, is good for allowing the public access to the building versus having to come through the other ways. And so the first one will be November 16, where we'll actually have some folks coming in to do an orientation of that board and, to start that meeting. And then they'll, they can go through setting up their organization and then taking some initial action of doing, currently, we have lots of policies that are, the Board of Health has, that need to be reaffirmed as part of the Board of Human Services to keep those up to date and consistent with our accreditation standards. And so we'll, we'll work through that in that initial meeting, which was scheduled for November 16. So I want to stop there and let the board decide what you want to do in terms of appointments and answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have, I do have one question for county manager. Talking about an individual serving in dual capacities, I would assume that that individual, if they in fact had dual roles, they would not have but one vote. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Just, just want to make sure. And, yeah, and one stipend.
And I'll say that most of the members of the Board of Health and the Board of Social Services currently do not take the stipend. There are very, very, very few.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'll start off with a motion to set the stipend for this new board that we're going to create at $30 per person per meeting.
First, Commissioner Swain, second, Commissioner McIntyre. Any other discussion? All in favor of the stipend being $30 for all members, please say aye.
I did remember the chairman could select the motion. Sorry. But that's what you do if you want to keep voting.
Commissioner Swain, would you like to amend your motion?
I'd be glad to change it. $30 per member, $40 for the chairman. For a person per meeting.
We've got a first and a second. $40 chairman, $30 for everyone else. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve the names presented on this list and appoint them as the new Department of Health and Human Services Board, terms to be staggered and to be cited by this board tonight, the terms, staggered terms.
Commissioner McIntyre, we have one serving as a commissioner, the other as general public.
And I would request that I be the general public person.
Thank you. And Commissioner Louder be the assigned commissioner. You heard Commissioner McIntyre, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morgan, second in motion. Any discussion?
What was that? He needs to go over there.
He's going to be general public. Jan's going to be assigned commissioner. Any other questions?
So this is going to be a 22-member board?
No, I think it's a 17-member board, the way I count it.
Mr. Chairman, you're, you know, some folks are going to not want to re-up on this board, and if they're a general public person, you don't have to replace that one because that's not required. So you still won't end up with, hopefully, but 17 members. And if you just go with, you know, if anything over 10 is going to be too many, as far as I'm concerned. So if you've got to go over 10, you might as well, and this board's going to have to have some subcommittees and that kind of thing. So that was the reason for my motion.
Okay. And to clarify this, Commissioner Swain, if the physician and engineer and psychologist were all to be, psychiatrists were to be put on there, you're right, it would be 21. But like Commissioner McIntyre said, if someone resigns from the general public, we don't have to replace those folks. But right now, the names that we're submitting are a total of 17. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion carries, six to one.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
How are we going to stagger those terms?
That was in my motion that we do that tonight. Because you've got to let these people know, and you let them know.
Excuse me, Mike. We're going to have to let these people know they've been appointed, and you've got to let them know if it's going to be for one year, two year, three, four, however we want to do that. And I, at least we need to have two-year and four-year terms. And we could have all, you know, all kinds of terms, but I don't know the fair way to do it, except put the names in a hat and draw them out, and this person's a one year and this is a two or whatever.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll make a motion. I move that we create four positions in a one-year term, three positions in a two-year term. Sorry, my math's going to be wrong. Sorry, five positions in a one-year term, five in a two-year term, five in a three-year term, five in a four-year term, and then two commissioners appointed yearly.
And who, who will decide on who those terms are going to be?
We'll have to draw them out of a hat. I'm.
You can put those names.
I didn't have all those names. I wasn't planning on a board that big.
Well, could you go down the list and say?
Let me.
One, this is a two. Excuse me.
Let me make a statement.
Okay.
We have to have at least 17 members, my understanding. Is that correct?
Got to have at least 15. Well, I take that back. There's 15, there's 15 positions that are, that are mandated, whether it be consumer, commissioner, the other specific professions that the health, the former health board did. But if you concurrently fill one of those spots, then you would have less than 15. Theoretically, you could have 11 or 12 if you had multiple, multiple members serving in multiple roles, consumer, engineer, commissioner, consumer. So that, that, it's, it's, you could have less than 15, but there's 15 sort of slots. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Counselor.
You're correct.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
As far as the, the four-year staggerments, well, couldn't we do the professional ones as far as the veterinarian that have our, that we have spots for already, the veterinarian, the pharmacist requirement, registered nurse, dentist, and optometrist? That's five. And put them on the four, on the four-year, because they're, yeah, those are needed positions. Yeah.
My understanding is Commissioner Swain may have a list.
He doesn't have all those names.
How you want to proceed, folks?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I would move to reconsider the previous item that we took up of, of this list. So that we can start this over.
Well, there was a motion that these folks be appointed. It was a second, and there was a vote. So what are you, what are you requesting again? That we rescind the vote?
Just asking for a, for a motion to reconsider.
Counselor, what do we need to do?
Mr. Chairman, if Commissioner Burleson wants to make a motion to reconsider, since he voted with the prevailing side, that would be in order. And then if he gets a second, then you would need to take a vote on the motion to reconsider.
You can vote. Correct.
Do we have a second to Commissioner Burleson's motion? Motion dies.
Let you guys handle that, man.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Chairman.
For staggered terms, did those terms speak two-year or four-year terms rather than one, two, three, and four?
I think.
I mean.
Personally, I think two-year terms and four-year terms, and you can go down the.
I don't know what we can roll into that way. And I'm sure, like, you don't have to have all five. I think it's a good idea to have.
Of all five that are, you know, required, but it wouldn't have to be. Or you could, we could do those five required, draw the other names out.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we nominate for the veterinarian, pharmacist, registered nurse.
Would you call those names when you make that statement?
Veterinarian, Dr. Amy Jordan, pharmacist, Rick Kane, registered nurse, Dr. Diane Daniels, dentist, Dr. Tom Norwood, and optometrist, Dr. James Marshall, for four-year terms.
Um, well, excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
The optometrist, did she withdraw her name?
Yeah.
So would you? Oh, okay, okay, Marshall.
So, uh, we have a first to make, Dr. Amy Jordan, Rick Kane, Diane Daniels, Tom Norwood, Jim Marshall, four-year terms. And there's a second. There is already a second. Commissioner Louder. All in favor of that four-year term of those names, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So the rest?
Well.
Mr. Chairman.
The rest, with the exception of the county commissioner, which is appointed annually, so.
Yes, sir, Commissioner. That was two-year terms? Four-year term? I'm sorry. Okay. So that's six people in four-year terms?
Five.
Five. And then.
Does that include the social?
Commissioner Louder, Commissioner Louder would be an automatic one-year term with the term expiring at, I guess, the calendar or December meeting.
And you would be too. And Tim would be too.
And Commissioner McIntyre, one-year term, which leaves several others to be appointed.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move to make the four consumers one-year terms. That would be Nancy Smoke, Boyd Honeycutt, Paige Emerson, and Calvin Lloyd.
Okay, do we have a second to that motion?
One second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move to make the rest of the names that we have not listed two-year terms, and that should fill your board.
So the two-year terms that I see would be Beth Thomas, Shirley Louder, Larry Gibson, Caroline Sawyer, Georgetta Edgerton, and Joan Udi. Everybody in agreement?
No, Jean's a one-year term.
Do you have a second for that, Mr. Chairman?
I don't know, do I?
I'll second that.
Okay. Commissioner Ehford, second of the, all right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Now send us nothing. Mr. Chairman.
But all subsequent appointments would be for four-year terms, correct?
The initial term, so those four that are vacant, you, those initial terms, you could do for less than four years. But if you reappoint any of these that you just appointed this evening.
They're appointed for one year.
Be for a four-year term. But any initial appointments can be less. So if you wanted to do a three-year term, for example, to stagger it more, some of those, any of those four that you haven't appointed yet could potentially be four years or, they could be one, two, or three. Then, there just can't be anything more than four.
Well, are we going to limit terms? It's going to be pretty hard to.
It's limited by statute. It's limited by statute. They can only serve two, two consecutive four-year terms, if I'm correct.
If you're a one or two, how, how you going to ever get? how, how you gonna ever get reappointed?
If you're a one-year, you're, it would be, it could expire, and then you would be, um, you would be appointed to a four-year term, and then you could actually do two consecutive four-year terms.
All, all appointments after the initial would be four-year terms.
Correct. And then they can do two consecutive four-year terms, and then it'd have to roll off.
If it's a two-year term, after that two years, they could be reappointed for four years.
Correct.
Right, that's what I said.
Yes. Sorry.
Stanley County Utilities, are you sure you wanna come up? Dear Ms. Davis.
Mr. Chairman. You had the turn.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would recommend, as far as the Consolidated Human Services Board, if you guys could agree on a term for the four vacant professional positions and, um, do a motion and vote on that, so you know now what their terms are going to be, if and when they're filled.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The four remaining vacant positions, I move that they be three-year terms for initial appointment.
Second. Okay, well, first and the second, Commissioner McIntyre, three-year terms for those professionals. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I bore your ask.
Now, Stanley County Utilities, Ms. Donna Davis. Sorry, Donna, we're gonna get you in a minute.
I apologize. One more recommendation, since the statute for the Consolidated Human Services Board says the county commissioner member shall serve only as long as the member is a county commissioner. If you all wanna do it annually, like you do the other, um, appointments to your other boards, I would also recommend actually making a motion as far as Commissioner Louder and Commissioner McIntyre's positions, limiting them to the, um, one-year annual reappointment as well.
Actually, I'm being appointed as a general public. I'm not being appointed as a commissioner.
Right, so if you wanna set Commissioner McIntyre's as a two-year to match the other general public, whatever's your pleasure. But I would recommend doing a motion to address those two positions.
Mr. Chairman, just, just to make it easy, I, I mean, we've already blown this thing out of proportion. I move that we appoint yearly two commissioners in December to the Board of Human Services.
Second.
First, and I have a second. All in favor, please say aye. Is it okay if I call Donna Davis now?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Ms. Davis. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Now, now I think I know why you're trying to get me up here before Andy presented that, uh, that item. I do appreciate the opportunity to present these three items to you this evening. The first of which is the, uh, request for the award of an installation of, um, award to a contractor for installation of a SCADA replacement system. The contract amount not to exceed two-hundred-seventy-two thousand nine-hundred-one dollars and fifteen cent to the Lord and Company Incorporated of Fort Mill, South Carolina. And just for the general public who may not know what a SCADA is, uh, SCADA stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. And throughout the county, we have tanks and pump stations and lift stations or sewer pump stations that operate, uh, on their own, so that we don't have to have someone staffing that location on a regular basis. They have alarms and controls, so the tank tells the water, uh, pump station that it's almost empty, and it tells it to turn the pumps on, and the pumps fill it up, and it says, I'm almost full, and it tells the pumps to turn off. So this is the communication system that operates the, the, generally operates the system so that, like I said, we don't have to have someone at that location every day, either checking every couple of hours or there all the time. So this, um, operation system generally works, uh, independent of the utility staff, uh, except in emergency situations. And also, we need to be aware of what's going on. So the Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition program itself is designed to, uh, to be that platform, that communications platform that allows us to operate the system, uh, on the number of staff members we have. And so we've got pump stations located in five different areas. We've got some lift stations in Norwood, and some in Baton, and some in Locust. So you've got, uh, a variety of places. But what this will allow us to do is to, and we already have this in place, so we're replacing what we currently have and upgrading it. But it will allow us, when we see one of those alarms, to pull up a tablet or smartphone or computer and take a look at what's going on and make, uh, prepare for the appropriate response. So we're asking that we be allowed to replace the system, update what we have. The one we have was here when I got here, so it's probably about twenty years old. And, um, software's outdated, some of the components are outdated, and we just have problems with it. It is time for it to be replaced.
What stands, Ms. Davis?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
I like, uh, Ms. Davis, I have a question. As far as y'all's recommendation to go with Lord Company?
Yes.
I was looking through here, and Custom Control, looks like they come in under almost forty thousand dollars less, if I'm looking, reading them numbers right.
Yes.
And the rating was in ninety versus a hundred, which to me was really close. Why would we not save forty thousand dollars?
Well, first of all, um, the IT department recommended that we accept, uh, Lord and Company because they have a hosting platform that allows them to maintain everything so that we don't have, uh, this extra burden on our IT staff, which is already, uh, very limited and has a lot of, of extra, um, lot of things they have to do with the limited number of staffing they have. We've worked with Lord and Company, uh, we've used some of their components. We know they work. They've given us good customer service. And in addition to that, um, this is not a situation where you have to take the lowest bidder. So we're looking for quality. Also, while the, um, the, uh, system that they, or protocol they set up was adequate, it was not our preferred protocol. Uh, what we'd like to do is get as much as we can off the radio communication system, which tends to have some problems with, uh, uh, with getting a signal whenever there's a line of sight issue. So if you're trying to get a signal from Locust with the existing radios, you have to put up repeaters, or you have to keep raising the antennas. Lord and Company's proposal would move us to a wireless system, wireless-based system, um, so that we're getting off of the radios, which require certain other, uh, have certain other issues and have been giving us some trouble.
So this company here would not be wireless?
Their proposal was not wireless.
It was not?
Sir. Yes, sir. I really don't know the answer to that question. It, it, it is. It's in excess of fifteen years old. It was here when, when I got here, so I would think, um, it should be fully depreciated, this one.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move that we award the installation of SCADA replacement contract, um, to Lord and Company in the amount of two-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand nine-hundred-one dollars and fifteen cents.
This, this item, um, is with regard to, uh, an award that was made by the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, which is a, a branch of the DEQ, or Department of Environmental Quality Funding Apparatus, that has awarded us a little over three million dollars, three million fifty-eight thousand three hundred dollars, to be exact, in, uh, loan funding to rehabilitate the West Stanley Waste Water Treatment Plant, which was formerly the Oakboro Waste Water Treatment Plant. As you all know, this, uh, plant needs some substantial rehabilitation. And this was the award that we received. This money would come from the state. It's a twenty-year loan at zero percent interest. Uh, there is no principal forgiveness, which means there's no, no grant funding with it. But what we'd like to do is accept this loan in this amount so that we can get that project up and running and move forward with that and, um, get that waste water treatment plant where it needs to be. Yes, we've looked at that. It's, it's gonna be a healthy payment, but, um, it's gonna be tight, but we're gonna, we're, one of the things we hope is that when we do these rehabilitation proj, uh, projects, is that we also realize some cost savings, because things become more efficient. You don't waste as much money in electricity and, uh, and in repairs, certainly in repairs. Uh, we've been spending about fifty thousand dollars a year just in repairs to keep this thing running and patching it and making little improvements here and there. So that's about a third of the, the annual debt service right there.
I believe Ms. Davis is, uh, what they're seeking, two things, a request to accept project award, and then the approval of the authorization resolution and the revised, revised capital ordinance.
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move that we accept the, uh, project award in the amount of three million fifty-eight thousand three hundred dollars.
Also include the resolution. Capital project.
Can I do it all in the form of one motion?
If you would like to, I think that would be fine.
Uh, also included in that motion to authorize, uh, the resolution and the revised capital project.
Second.
First, second by Commissioner McIntyre. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Davis, you are with the award of engineering services.
Yes. Uh, the final item from your consideration has to do with this waste water treatment plant as well. Uh, in order to get the funding, we had to get a, what we call a preliminary engineering report approved by a DEQ, the, uh, the funding agency. We've gotten to that point. They have approved the, the environmental report, or the preliminary engineering report, excuse me. And, um, that was done with the assistance of our local engineer and a consultant that helped us get everything that was required. Waste water treatment plant engineering is a little different than, uh, what we're used to doing here. So at this point, we, uh, put this, uh, proposal or this, uh, project out for a request for qualifications to look for an engineer that specializes in treatment plant reconstruction or construction. And so we have, uh, have presented to you a, um, a request to award the engineering contract, uh, not to exceed seven hu, two-hundred-seventy-five thousand eight-hundred-ninety-four dollars to W.K. Dixon, an engineering firm of Charlotte, North Carolina, for engineering services related to this West Stanley Waste Water Treatment Plant rehabilitation. If you have any questions, I'll be certainly happy to answer those.
Any questions, Ms. Davis? Would the board like to do?
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would, uh, move that we award the engineering contract not to exceed two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand eight-hundred-ninety-four dollars to W.K. Dixon of Charlotte for the engineering services, what, what the West Stanley Waste Water Treatment Plant Rehabilitation.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Swain. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you very much.
Chairman, I got one question.
Yes.
We don't need, we don't have a budget amendment or anything for that, do we?
Actually, the, the budget amendment that, for the prior item, covers.
Will that take care of that?
Yes, it covers that. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, meeting room design proposal. Senator, County Manager Andy Lucas.
Chairman, members of the board, um, in your packet this evening, you have a, um, a proposed wall mural that would go behind the dais here, uh, that the Stanley County Convention and Visitors Bureau has put forth. Total cost of that is, uh, one thousand eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. Uh, the CVB's proposing to split the cost fifty-fifty with the Board of Commissioners, so it costs to be about nine hundred dollars to, um, basically put a mural behind here with, um, pictures, uh, it's integrated pictures of things that represent Stanley County and/or landmarks in Stanley County. Uh, and then it would also incorporate the new, uh, seal and remove the old, excuse me, new logo and remove the old seal, that some folks find to be antiquated with some of the industries that are represented. But, um, certainly textiles and agriculture are still very relevant in Stanley County. It's the aluminum that's, um, not so relevant. But we've got close to a thousand folks working in textiles in Stanley County at, uh, the various, um, industry, uh, manufacturing. So that one still is relevant, and certainly not to the extent it used to be, but very, very relevant, uh, in terms of employment. But I know that there's been some talk of putting the, the new logo up there. So it's a proposal, and you all can decide if you wanna move forward or not, um, the CVB has put forth. And, uh, like I said, it'd be fifty-fifty cost split. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman. I've, I've got a question. Commissioner Eifert and Commissioner Morgan and I are talking. Would any commissioners have a problem if maybe if we split that nine-hundred-and-fifteen dollars amongst ourselves? And then we took care of that?
What about it, Commissioners?
Okay, I'll, I'll say what's on my mind.
Please do.
Because, uh, I like to give to charities. And the charities that I give to are very, very important to me. And I like to not just maintain what I give, but I like to increase it. Some of those charities are local, some are not. But I, I do have an objection, because if I have extra dollars, I want to choose where it goes. Thank you.
Any other comments? What do we wanna do, folks?
Let it work out exactly like it planned, but.
Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to accept the proposal from Stanley County CVB. And the county support one-half the cost or not to exceed nine-hundred-and-fifteen dollars.
We have a motion and a second that the county accept the proposal. And that, uh, it costs the county no more than nine-hundred and twenty-five dollars, is that right? Nine-hundred-and-fifteen. Any other discussion? All in favor of this motion, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Six, one. And I would state, if anybody wants to give the county some money, go toward this, they're more than welcome to. Okay. Consent agenda, I think everybody's had time to review it. We need, either need it approved, or we need changes made. Do we have a motion, the consent agenda be approved?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion that the consent agenda be approved, sir.
Commissioner Eifert made the motion. Do we have a second? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Which brings it up to public comment time. No one has signed up for public comments, but I would like to open the floor for anyone that would like to come up and make public comments that did not sign up. So if you're here and you wanna say something, come on up, state your name, and hold your comments to three minutes. Anyone here? Seeing no one, it's time for board comments. And I would ask that Commissioner Swain start off.
No comments this evening, thank you.
Commissioner McIntyre.
No comments, sir.
Commissioner Louder. Commissioner Morgan.
No comment.
Commissioner Eifert.
No comment, sir.
Good gracious. Commissioner Burleson. Commissioner Burleson?
My comments are, we had a Water and Sewer Authority meeting prior to this meeting, and Donna Davis gave us a presentation of our current financial status, and things are improving, and hopefully, over time, will continue to improve, and hopefully, sometime next year, we will begin the process of looking at Phase Four for the Water and Sewer Authority, and hopefully can get that done in a timely manner, and also remind folks to keep the folks in Texas at the church and that community in your prayers.
Thank you. I do have a couple of comments. On October 17th, I met with Congressman Richard Hudson as a part of a group representing the Central Island Council of Governments to talk about the importance of the regional transit plan, which Stanley County's a part of. We also talked about brownfield grant money, and we also talked about the regional mobility plan, which Central Island Council of Governments have been instrumental in all of those type plans. Had a good meeting with Congressman, and he's well aware of what Central Island Council of Governments do, and the projects they're working on. And as a member, we are members of the Central Island Council of Governments. I attended as the lead person from the COG. We also had with us Town Commissioner Norwood, Mr. Hartzell, and also had County Commissioner of Barris County, oh me, let me think, Mr. Furr? Lynn Shue, thank you. Lynn Shue was present, and it was a good, good attended meeting. I know that Andy Lucas, our county manager, and Scott Eifert, and I attended the meeting that was held last Thursday out at the Aggreg Civic Center to talk about how Stanley County blends in with the greater Charlotte area. And Jeff Michaels was our speaker, who I thought did a good job presenting a lot of different facts. I enjoyed the meeting, I hope you all did also. I also know that our building permits, year-to-date, are up. Over last year, printed it out, I didn't bring it, but we're out, we are still up substantially, which means our economy is still going strong. That's all I have. The other comments that I hope we will have is from our council. Ms. Furr, you have anything?
No comment, sir, thank you.
Okay. County Manager Lucas, do you have anything?
No comment, thank you.
Mark Tyler, do you have anything? Okay. Well, at this time, we need to go into a closed session to discuss real estate in accordance with General Statute 143, 318.11A5, and economic development in accordance with General Statute 143, 318.11A4.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into closed session.
Have a second.
Aye.
All in favor, let's go into closed session.